Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Stevens and Stevenson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our December... What was the date? December fifteenth meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hosh.
Motion to adopt the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Casey. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Steen.
Motion carries, one abstention. Commissioner Stevens. Our first order of new business. Planning Case sixteen dash thirty. Site plan for a semi tractor sales and service facility. J.R. Ryan, Evergreen Boulevard and Ninety-third Lane. Mr. Harlecker.
For a fifty-nine thousand square foot semi tractor sales and service facility. The property is located at the end of Evergreen Boulevard, on the south side of Highway six-ten. And at the north, I would call it the northwest corner of the intersection of Ninety-third Lane and Evergreen. Highlighted here, outlined in black. Here's the proposed site plan. Site is thirteen point three three acres. Building is here with kind of a, an office, parts facility up front. And then this narrow spot here is the service space for the building. For parking, as you can see from the shaded area here, that's all paving. Up front here, along here and here are customer and employee parking. And then I believe there's also employee parking back over in this area here. They've got different sized stalls depending on what's going to be parked there. They've got spaces that can accommodate trailers as well as just the semi tractors. Two entrances coming in from Evergreen. One up here on the cul-de-sac bubble. It accesses both the interior of the site here as well as teeing off and accessing customer parking at this location here. Second access, this location here. That lines up with the driveway across the street. And again, you can access the interior of the site from there as well as the vehicle parking around the front of the building. The site plan complies with all the dimensional and setback requirements of the industrial zoning district. And they are proposing to put up a fence around the perimeter of the site. And across the front here will be more of a wrought iron type fence. I believe the rest of the fence will be more of a chain link. Any sort of barbed wire or razor wire is not allowed in the city. So it would just be a typical chain length fence. There is a spot here in the front of the building where there's room for a display.
Mr. Harlecker, we're not seeing anything on the screen. Is it, do you have anything up?
Here we go.
There it is.
I'm sorry about that. Then again, here's the front of the building. The main entrance is at this location here. There is a doorway also in this area here. It'll show up better when we get to the building floor plans. Stormwater pond out in this location here. There is an existing billboard here that will remain. There's a second one down in this corner here that's going to be removed because it conflicts with everything. And it's a non-conforming billboard. So that will be removed as part of the site plan. It shows up better on the landscape plan, but there is a very wide utility easement going across this area here, two hundred and twelve feet wide. So this whole area here is limited as far as what you can do with it. You can't put any overstoryed trees or any structures in it. That's why the building and everything is shifted to where it is. It's really the only location on site where you can get a building. Here's the grading plan. It's a fairly level site. There are a couple wetlands down in here. And then they've got the stormwater pond out on the west end, out here. Landscaping, this is kind of a unique landscape plan given the site constraints. This dashed line going across here is where the transmission line easement is. So you really can't do anything in there. So what they've done is they've got the street trees, forty-foot intervals as required by code. They've got the shrubs along here and along here. Let me landscape and code. They've got the landscaping islands here and here. They've got overstoryed trees and some plantings on it. And then the landscaped islands outside of the easement have overstoryed trees. Over in this area here, you've got a, they're doing a prairie planting over there, flowering, prairie plantings. And then they're clustering the landscaping around the two wetlands. They're doing shrubs and ornamental trees and a couple overstoryed trees here. And then the shrubs and ornamental trees here. You've got a line of ornamental trees here. And then overstoryed trees out here around the front on the landscape islands. Then down there, doing the same thing around this wetland with the plantings focused and highlighting the stormwater pond where this is a prairie plantings flowering. This area here will be a prairie plantings also, but it will be a short grass prairie. One of the conditions of the recommendation is that they also enter into a maintenance agreement with the company to ensure that, at least getting started, that the necessary maintenance is done to ensure that it's a successful prairie planting out there. Look at the building elevations. This is the east elevation that's facing Evergreen Boulevard. Concrete tip-up panels. The different colors correspond with different surface treatments on the panels. I believe the brown area here is more of a flat. And the darker, darker tan area is an aggregate finish. This is the, the office showroom areas. These are glass panels. And then they've got, these are metal, pilasters, I guess you could call them. They kind of accent the entrance, which is right here, that little red canopy. This is the side that faces Highway six-ten? The north side? Yeah. Again, you can see how the treatment extends around the building. These overhead doors are glass doors. They aren't your typical solid panel overhead doors. And then this is the elevation that faces the railroad tracks, the end of the building. Again, and then the treatment's wrapped around. Then this is the elevation that faces the south. The main entrance is here. This is the glass on the front where the office and showroom area is. And again, this is the service doors on the south side. They did accent this area here. This corresponds with the break room area inside the building. So they've got a glass panel system here to kind of break out that facade of the building. And then they've got the canopy. There's an entrance there also. Here's the floor plan. This is the service space here. This area here is the break room with the glass paneling system right there. This is the office showroom and parts facility here. There is a second story also on this, but at this point, the finish up there has not been determined yet. It can be used for a break room, meeting rooms, things like that. Main entrance coming in here to the reception area. Then you've got offices. This is the showroom area here. And the parts component of the business back here. Six-ten is off to the top here. And they've got two loading bays here and here. As you can tell from the, the north elevations, they do screen it well because they would be backing in here. With that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant's in the audience to answer questions. And they did bring material boards so you can see exactly what the finishes are going to be on the building. Engineering department has reviewed the plans. They don't have any significant issues. They are currently working with Coon Creek Watershed on finalizing the wetland delineations. That can't be done till spring. But they're working with Coon Creek on finalizing that. With that, got seven conditions for the recommendation of approval. Right now, this is two lots. The two lots need to be combined prior to the issuance of a building permit. There are outstanding park dedication fees on this site, the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. All engineering comments be addressed. All necessary permits from Coon Creek Watershed be in hand prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant can enter into a site security agreement with the city and enter into a maintenance agreement for the prairie plantings. The project complies with Title XI. And I'm recommending that we add an eighth condition. We did get a letter from MINDOT today. And the eighth condition should read that they comply with any recommendations that MINDOT may have.
Mr. Harlecker, would that be related to six-ten, the highway?
Right. If they're going to do any sort of grading or anything up to the boundary, it's kind of a, it was kind of a standard comment letter from them. They didn't have anything significant.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Mr. Harlecker, this might be a question for the applicant, but if you know, has there been any estimate of how many semis will be coming and going around this site on a daily basis or a weekly basis?
You can ask.
The applicant?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, they just, Commissioner Stevenson, city just rebuilt Evergreen Boulevard this summer. And I assume they built it up to, you know, so it could handle the traffic, truck traffic going up and down through there. There is a large electrical contractor just south of here. They've got some pretty heavy loads coming through there.
Commissioner Casey.
Oh, Mr. Harlecker, is any fill going to be brought in to there? That's kind of a low lying area.
That low lying area is one of the areas that they're looking at wetland delineation on.
Just let that sit.
Yeah. At this point, I'm not sure if they're going to have to bring any fill in or not. Maybe they can address that if the grading will balance out.
Yeah.
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlecker? Petitioners, anything you'd like to add or make presentation on? If so, please come up to the microphone. Give us your name, please.
My name is Jack Gratkin. I am President of R.J. Ryan Construction, one of the applicants. I can answer any of the building questions that you have as far as the, and to answer the question as far as the import of dirt. There is about twenty thousand yards of dirt that we're going to bring in to raise the site up. Because you're correct. It is, it is a low lying area. There is some wetlands on it. We will have some ponding. But for the building pad itself, there is about twenty thousand yards of dirt that will be imported onto the site. Okay? Anything else on the building? I do have a sample of the.
We'll like to see those before you're done with your presentation as well.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Ream. I'm the owner of Ream Kenworth. I have studied the amount of traffic coming and going. I didn't know that I would need it here tonight. So I'm going to work off my memory. I believe that in a typical eight-hour shift, we see about, and this is currently where we are, where we have fewer stalls. We typically see about seven trucks coming, four repair during an hour on average. And I believe about ten leaving because they come and go. Sometimes they'll come, they'll leave again because we can't take them at that point. So I can provide you that information, but I would have to go back and find it in a document for, to be truly accurate. Is that acceptable?
Your answer is acceptable to me. It's the person who asked the question. I don't, you don't need to provide, I trust your memory.
Okay. Well, good. Not everyone does.
What are your anticipated hours of operation?
Our manufacturer likes to see the dealership open eighty hours during the week and eight on the weekend. So we would be running two shifts from six AM to midnight typically. In the past, when there has been demand, we have run twenty-four hours. At the moment, we don't plan to do that, but we would want you to know and to be agreeable to having us run a twenty-four hour operation if necessary.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
You're talking about the repair end of the service?
Yes, the repair end.
What about the showroom? What are those hours?
That's typically, you know, seven o'clock in the morning until five o'clock in the evening roughly. That's, you know, when we see customers. We're a business-to-business seller. So we do business with our customers when they're at work too.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I'm just curious. You mentioned that your present facility, where is your present facility?
It's in St. Paul, Minnesota. It's in the midway, right on University Avenue and Cleveland. It's been there since nineteen forty-nine. And we're pretty much landlocked there. So can't go any further. We purchased land south of the building and on the north side of University, but there's just no more room for expansion there.
So are your plans then to close that when you open this one or run them both?
I will be closing the one in St. Paul.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hosh.
Just so I can get an idea of the traffic, this is a semi tractor sales and service facility? Does that mean the trailers are coming with? Or do they get dropped off in the parking lot? Or how does that?
We do not sell trailers. Sometimes they will arrive with a trailer and drop it for the period of time during their repair. We don't allow people to store their trailers on our property. So some do and some don't. That's the best I can do. We also sell medium-duty trucks that you would often see built up with a box on the back, like a straight truck. So they come and go also. They can't get rid of their trailer, so.
Commissioner, any other questions at this time? All right. If we could see your presentation of materials, please.
Scott mentioned the two different types of finish on the panel. So this would be the more aggregate side. If this, Carrie hasn't approved this.
I haven't even seen it.
It may, it's going to be this similar idea. It may, this one may be a little bit just a shade darker just to differentiate it maybe like on the plan. Maybe add a little bit more pigment to it. But it will be a prefinished panel similar to this. Made by welts concrete.
All right. Thank you.
Touch it?
Yeah.
Can I show you the glass if you'd like? We show on the elevations, I don't know if we have that, do we do? On the corners, we have just a clear curtain wall, insulated glazing. And then the darker glazing areas will be more of a spandrel-type panel, insulated glass as well, but, you know, backmated so that you get a, you know, kind of the color differentiation. At the showroom, the windows themselves, curtain walls, storefront will be like a clear anodized finish, you know, just a basically metallic silver. The red accent canopy and color of the signage is the Kenworth red. So it's pretty much a standard red with a little slight variation. And then the tall fins, which are the building signages, are black or dark charcoal color to really make the signs stand out. There's also white, probably white illuminated letters at those fin signs to illuminate the Kenworth and the logo. That was the precast, is kind of all the materials.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Can I ask just a couple more questions? First, I think that, I'm just, this doesn't go into the consideration of the site plan, but I think a lot of people will be curious. How many jobs does this project create? How many people will we employ in this facility? Sorry to make you come all the way back up, but.
I've accumulated that information also. I'm going to work off of memory. Right now, our workforce in St. Paul is about a hundred and ten people, a hundred and twenty if you count some of the part-time positions that we have. And we estimate that about two-thirds of those people will come north. We're working on a facility in the south metro also. So about a third will go down there, about two-thirds will come here. And a lot of that is because many of them live in this area, in the Anoka County area. So when we were looking for a location, we were really concerned about keeping our workforce because they're skilled and they're trained and they're scarce. So we're anticipating that we won't lose any of them. They'll be happy to come. And by these people, I'm talking about our technical staff and our parts people. And then we'll have also salespeople and administrative people on site as well.
The other question I wanted to ask was for those, for the semis that are coming in and leaving, is the expect, is your expectation that they'll be coming off primarily off six-ten and then using the Coon Rapids Boulevard, Ninety-third, Evergreen?
That's what I'm anticipating, yes. I know that coming from the east traveling west, it's a little bit more difficult to access. Could you please put in another access?
Common dot.
But coming from the west, it's quite simple. Coming from the north, we have a lot of customers up in the Elk River area that it'll be easy for them to access. Coming from the south, off of six-ninety-four, if people want to come up University, I think it's ideal. So.
Okay.
That's the expectation.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions at this time? All right. We do need to have a public hearing in this matter. So I will open a public hearing in Planning Case sixteen dash thirty. Site plan for semi tractor sales and service facility, R.J. Ryan, Evergreen Boulevard, Ninety-third Lane. Anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner.
Commissioner Chair Schwartz.
Yes, Mr. Harlecker.
I'd just like to add one thing here. The signage on the building here is subject to separate sign permits. So the signage is not being approved as part of the site plan review. Same with the, the freestanding sign. The location is okay. It meets the setback requirements. But the ultimate design and face was also subject to a separate sign permit.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Well, I feel from what I've seen and what I've read and driving over there and stuff, we're lucky to have you coming to our city. So, you know, it's always nice to have newness coming because we are an older city that's kind of landlocked. So great, so we, you know, it's great. I love the site plan and all of that. And the difference in the prairie and the other plantings and stuff, I think are going to be really unique too. Especially with all of the power lines and all of that stuff coming in. You've done a really nice job, I feel, on setting all of that up. So I'm excited about this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stevenson.
My only comment is, well, I'll start by saying I think it's a great project, great-looking building. The only comment I would have is, I think, less for the applicant and more for city staff, which is that I'm wondering about the intersection of Evergreen and Eighty-Fifth, which is uncontrolled at the moment. And given that we've now got two fairly recent, you know, semi-related projects going in off of Evergreen there. And I, you know, I use that intersection occasionally when going to and from the YMCA. And I haven't really noticed that's been terrible since the first project went in. But it's a significant amount of traffic that they're expecting. And I kind of wonder about what's going to happen at that uncontrolled intersection. Because while I understand the applicant thinks that most of the traffic will come off Ninety-third, and that would be what would make sense to me too. I think that you could see traffic coming in off Eighty-Fifth there. So I don't know. I just think it's something that should be.
I think, this is more of an engineering question, I believe. But if traffic at that intersection starts to become a problem, we'll get phone calls. And at that time, you know, the city can take steps to do a traffic analysis and see if a stop sign is actually warranted for that intersection. That is, Eighty-Fifth is a county road, county highway. So we would have to work in conjunction with Anoka County Highway Department on any signalization of that intersection.
Well, I too welcome your coming in with this facility. This piece of property has been sitting there for a long time. We've had a couple other plans come forth that never went to fruition. And I think this would be a good utilization of this property. And the building looks like it would be a real outstanding asset to our community. I look forward to it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
And I'd like to make a motion then.
All right.
In Planning Case sixteen dash thirty, like to approve the site plan with the conditions as stated in our packet and with the addition of one additional condition, which is the MINDOT, that they comply with the recommendations of MINDOT.
Second?
Motion by Schmokey, second by Stevens. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council if someone so chooses.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Our next, uh, order of business. We need to elect, uh, vice chair. With the new year comes a reappointment or a re, reelection of our vice chair position. Is there any nominations or volunteers for vice chair position?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmokey.
I'd like to nominate Zachary Stevenson for the position of vice chair.
Second.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Casey. First off, uh, Commissioner Stevenson, uh, you accept the nomination?
Yes, I accept.
Any further discussion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, vice chair.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move on to item number three, which is consider adoption of the 2017 Rules of Order, internal procedures, and policies, and Code of Ethics.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
I move that we adopt the 2017 Rules of Order, internal procedures, and policies, and Code of Ethics.
I'll second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Schmokey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have, uh, under other business, we have our 2016 annual report of the planning commission.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hosh.
I move that we rec, uh, that we accept the report.
Second. Motion by Hosh, second by Casey. Any discussion? I just want to say, Mr. Harlecker in his office sure makes it look like we did an awful lot of work last year.
I just wanted to make you look up.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And reports be ac- accepted. Uh, Mr. Harlecker, any information on any future development or future development, current development going on?
Chair Schwartz and commission? Not at this time. The, the regular projects are still moving along. You got the hospital. I don't know if you caught the city council meeting last night, um, but they gave a presentation about their, um, reorganization plans and what they're doing. And, um, their, their project is moving ahead. Their renovation and, and construction, um, of the, uh, parking ramp. Um, Dennis' office is still going on. Um, we haven't seen any, um, uh, new businesses come into town where they're taking over any spaces. Most of the shopping centers are pretty well leased out. There's a few vacant spots in some of them. Uh, but, uh, nothing, nothing real significant yet. We're still waiting.
And as far as next month's agenda?
Uh, next month, we didn't receive any applications. Um, however, we're planning on having a workshop that night, um, just to, uh, inform the commissioners, the, the status of the comprehensive plan update.
All right. Commission, anyone else have anything? Otherwise, we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Hosh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.